Well, good evening, everyone, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And welcome to our City Council Meeting of December 19, 2018. And before we start the meeting, could I have Pastor Jordan Harris come forward from Cornerstone Church for the opening prayer?
All right. Would everybody bow with me as we join a prayer from our text? "Lord, we come before you to ask you to be gracious to us and to bless us and cause your face to shine upon us, that your way may be known on the earth and your salvation among all nations. Let the people praise you, O God, and let all the peoples praise you. Let the nations be glad and sing for joy, for you will judge the peoples with uprightness and guide the nations on earth. Let the peoples praise you, O God; let the peoples praise you. The earth has yielded its produce. God our God, you bless us. You bless us, and that all the earth may fear you." Lord, we ask, as this meeting gets kicked off, that you give wisdom and guidance to all of its participants, Lord, that ultimately you may be glorified in the things that take place here this evening. We pray this all in your holy and gracious name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call to order the City Council Meeting of December 19, 2018. And Chief Hurley, would you lead us in flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I want to personally thank Jennifer Matthews and Sarah Orozco for all the treats outside. I probably ate 2,000 calories worth, and I'm very appreciative of that, and it was very good. So, thank you again so much for that, that very nice spread. Okay, let's go on to roll call.
Fariah, Johnson Santos, Jones, Lewis, Falalta.
We do have a quorum. Mr. Fariah is leading the junior high choir this evening, and there isn't enough of them to go around, so he had to choose one or the other, so he's over, leading the choir tonight. So, have a great concert, Mr. Fariah. Let's go on to item four, consideration of approval agenda. Do I have a motion? Okay, let's go to Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, I want to make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Okay, Mrs. Santos.
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Santos. To approve the agenda stated, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. And when you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence, and if you have a cellphone, please turn them off or place them on vibrate. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening and Merry Christmas.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, Jennifer Joaquin with Republic Services here in Los Banos. Just wanted to remind our residents that we're going to be on a holiday schedule this next week, so if your services are done on Monday, you will still have this service on Monday. However, Tuesday will move back to Wednesday, Wednesday to Thursday, and so on. Also, wanted to let the residents know the proper way to dispose of Christmas trees. That would be not your artificial, but your actual fresh trees. Those do not go on the side of the road. Those actually need to be cut up into two-to-three-foot pieces and placed in your green bin.
Well, thank you.
Any questions?
Is there any questions from council at this time? No?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. All right. Technical difficulties. All right. So, is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
I thought you were going to turn the mic off on me.
No, 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 not you, Mr. Valentine.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council and staff. I'm Jim Valentine, resident of Los Banos. Once again, I bring you a Christmas invitation from the Quanis Club of Los Banos and the Los Banos Fire Department. I am here to remind everyone of our 35th Annual Christmas Eve Dinner, which will be held at Fire Station Number 1, 333 Seventh Street, which is the corner of Seventh and C. Dinner will be served on December 24, and that's Monday, thank you for reminding me last meeting, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We will have our traditional barbecue chicken, pasta salad, roll, pie, and beverage. Santa will visit from 12 noon until 1:00 p.m. The dinner is free to all. Deliveries will also be available to those otherwise who are unable to come to the fire station. They can call me at 769-6703. Chief Hurley's not going to like this, but they could probably call the fire station also because years, City Employee of the Year has a list that she can write down names for us. Again, I want to publicly thank the city and especially Fire Chief Hurley for the use of the fire station and for once again co-sponsoring this event. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
I look forward to seeing you at the, on the, on Monday. Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum and go on to consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, were voted on in one motion, and less removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And tonight, we have, Mrs. Souza?
Check register for number 213780 through 213974 in the amount of $948,867.19. Development Impact Fee Report for Fiscal Years 2014 through 2018, AB 1600. Minutes for the November 7, 2018 City Council Meeting. City Council Resolution Number 6031, adopting a revised budget for the 2018-2019 fiscal year as it pertains to increasing expenditures in the general fund, Fire Department Building and Structures account in the amount of $12,000. City Council Resolution Number 6032, approving and adopting final tract map number 2016-01, East Center Phase 1 and accompanying subdivision improvement agreement, and the recommendation is to approve all items as submitted.
Is there any City Council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Okay. If not, do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda stated.
Do I have a second? Mr. Jones? Motion by Santos, second by Jones, all in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Let's go on to item seven, public hearing. If you challenge or propose action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing, described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 7A, public hearing. To receive public comment, consideration of the General Plan Amendment 2018-01, Zone Change Number 2018-01, and Negative Declaration, SCH Number 2018-101013, for the development of a new police department facility located at 1111 G Street, more specifically identified as assessed parcels 026161003 and a portion of 026161008. Item 7A1, City Council Resolution Number 6030, approving the General Plan Amendment 2018-01 for the Los Banos Police Station Facility, to redesignate properties from mixed-use to civic-institutional located at 1111 G Street, more specifically identified as assessed parcels 026161003 and a portion of 026161008, and finding that the acquisition of the property is consistent with the city's general plan. And Ordinance Number 1167, this will be the second reading, amending the official zoning map by rezoning property for the Los Banos Police Station Facility and Rail Corridor RC to Public Facility PF and on approximately 3.6 acres located at 1111 G Street, more specifically identified as assessed parcel number 026161003 and portion of 026161008. And we will go to our Community and Economic Development Director, Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So, as this is the second reading, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on this particular item, but just briefly describe just what happened at the last meeting. So, at the last City Council meeting on December 5, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 6029, which approved the negative declaration for the Los Banos Police Station Facility, and there was a motion of intent to adopt Resolution Number 6030 for the General Plan Amendment, and the City Council also that night waived the first reading of Ordinance Number 1167 by title, and then continued the public hearing to tonight's date. This particular project is for the development of a new, possibly, give or take, 35,000-square-foot building at 1111 G Street. This would be immediately west of the new county courthouse on G Street. So, with that, staff is asking that the City Council would open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then adopt Resolution Number 6030 to approve General Plan Amendment Number 2018-01 to amend the General Plan land use map from mixed-use to civic-institutional, and then waive the second reading and adopt Ordinance Number 1167 by title to rezone the property at 1111 G Street from rail corridor to public facility. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Is there any City Council member that has questions before I open up the public hearing? Okay. I would now like to open the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 6030 and Ordinance Number 1167. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and let's go on to item one, City Council Resolution Number 6030. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos?
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 6030.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second motion.
Okay, motion by Johnson Santos, second by Lewis, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6030, as read by title. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Okay, and we have two motions for Ordinance Number 1167. First, we have the waiving of the second reading, and then the adoption. So, for Ordinance Number 1167, do I have a motion to waive the second reading? Mrs. Santos?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of Ordinance Number 1167.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Okay, motion by Santos, second by Lewis, to waive the second reading of Ordinance Number 1167. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None. Carried. Mrs. Santos?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 1167.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Johnson Santos, second by Lewis, for the adoption of Ordinance Number 1167. This is a roll call vote. Mrs. Souza?
Fariah. Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Falalta?
Yes, carried unanimously. Historic event. Welcome, chief. Get it done. Okay. Let's go on to item eight, consideration of adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6033, establishing the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee and adopting operational bylaws. And we're going to go to our city attorney, Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the audience, all four of you. Tonight before you is a resolution to form the Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee. If you recall, November 6, the voters of Los Banos enacted the Los Banos Essential City Services Half-Cent Sales Tax, also known as Measure H. As part of that measure, it's required that the City Council form a Citizens Oversight Committee, and so that is the subject of this resolution tonight. The resolution, really, the guts of it are in the bylaws, and the bylaws are what set up the committee itself in terms of its composition and how it will operate, and I'm not going to go through that in too much detail, but I will hit the highlights. And this is a proposed resolution, and it's subject to, obviously, discussion and any types of modifications to it that you would like to make. The measure itself is fairly general in terms of the formation of the committee, so it leaves you quite a bit of discretion on how you want to proceed. Anyway, our staff's vision of the Citizens Oversight Committee is that it would be five members who are residents of the Los Banos, registered voters, and over the age of 18. Measure does indicate that city employees, which would include City Council members, consultants to the cities or vendor, to the city or vendors of the city, are precluded from serving on the committee. However, if you're on another committee or commission of the city, that does not preclude you from serving on this, this committee. you from serving on this committee. The bylaws envision an appointment process similar to or identical to your process now that you use for filling your commission seats, which is an application and interview process. Once selected, the committee members will have to complete an ethics training class, which is mandated by AB 1234, which almost all employees of the city have to adhere to. This committee would be no different than that. The terms will be two-year terms for the members. At the initial stage of the putting this committee together, though, two of the members will serve one-year terms, and three of the members will serve two-year terms, so that we can start rotating on an odd-even basis the membership, so that we don't have five members going off all at the same time. But once that is established, there'll be two-year terms for all five members. It's a voluntary service to the community, and so these committee members will not be paid, they will not be paid employees of the city. In terms of the meetings of the committee, the staff envisions that they'll meet at least twice a year, probably more, and twice a year to deal with their functions. And there's two functions and duties that this committee will have. One of the, one of the functions is to review and make recommendations to the city council in terms of expenditure of the Measure H funds, in terms of making a recommendation prior to the adoption of the annual budget. So part of their duties are, part of their duties are made up of reviewing the funds that have come in through Measure H, the needs of the city, the priorities of the city, and make recommendations prior to the adoption of the annual budget, to put together an annual expenditure plan for the Measure H funds. That would be anticipated to happen, obviously, before the annual budget is adopted on an annual basis. The second thing that they'll be charged to do, which is the second part of what they will be doing, which may take one or more meetings, is to review the past performance of the expenditure of those funds to report to the community as to whether or not those funds have been utilized and spent in the manner in which Measure H envisioned and the community envisions in terms of those dollars. So there's kind of two different charges this committee will have, whether it takes two meetings, 10 meetings, 20 meetings, it's going to be up to that committee. All their meetings will be subject to the Ralph M. Brown Act and will be open to the In order to help facilitate the workings of the committee, the city manager will appoint a city liaison, which will serve as staff to the committee to provide technical administrative assistance to the committee in carrying out their duties. As you know, Measure H has a life of 15 years. Once that 15 years expires, assuming no extension, this committee will automatically terminate after its last report to the community on the expenditure of the Measure H funds up to that point. So it's very straightforward in terms of the bylaws. A lot of thought went into it, and we look to you for any comments or questions that you might have, and assuming there are none, we would ask that you consider adopting the resolution as submitted. I'm here to answer any questions.
So in 15 years, we'll be able to continue talking to you, correct?
I don't know if I'll be here for 15 years, but you'll be talking to somebody.
Well, let's hope you're here in any capacity, okay? All right.
My predecessor was here for 38 years, but that's not my goal.
Okay. All right. So with that, I'd like to know, is there any city council member on agenda item eight, consideration of adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6033, establishing a Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee and adopting operational bylaws? Are there any questions by council? Mrs. Lewis, did you have a question? Oh, before. Okay. Is there anyone who has a question? Do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 6033.
Okay. Mrs., who buzzed in? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Santos, second by Jones, for the establishment of resolution number 6033, as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Number nine, announcement to advertise for Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee members. Five vacancies. And this is an informational item only, and so now that we have the resolution passed, let's advertise for the five members. Any questions on item nine by anyone? Okay. Let's go on to item 10, appointment of city council members to serve with the mayor on the selection committee for the following. Airport Advisory Commission, 10A. 10B, Economic Development Advisory Committee, three vacancies. Parks and Recreation Commission, three vacancies. Planning Commission, five vacancies. Tree Commission, two vacancies. Measure H Citizens Oversight Committee, five vacancies. And people that are already appointed, their term is up, so have to know if they want to be reappointed or not. So with that, I would like to bring forth the name of, we have a rotation schedule, and that rotation schedule goes through each council member as far as each committee is concerned. And so, Mr. Jones, we put you in the rotation of Mr. Silveira. So, and you're first up, and so I am appointing, not appointing, but I would like a second on the recommendation of Brent Jones for the Airport Advisory Committee for three vacancies. I would make that motion. Do I have a second? Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Oh, I'm gonna, let me get these off here. Our system is a little bit, okay. Say that again, Mrs. Lewis?
Second motion.
Thank you. So it's been motioned by the mayor to place Brent Jones on the Airport Advisory Commission, and second by Mrs. Lewis. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to Economic Development Advisory Committee, three vacancies, and I would like to bring forth the name of Veronica Johnson-Santos to work with me on the selection. And do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been motioned by the mayor and second by Mrs. Santos to appoint Veronica Johnson-Santos to the Economic Development Advisory Committee, three vacancies. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Let's go on to Parks and Recreation Commission, three vacancies. And I would like to appoint Deborah Lewis to Parks and Recreation's Commission. And do I have a second? Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Mr. Jones, to appoint Deborah Lewis to Parks and Recreation Commission. And let's go on to Planning Commission.
Need to vote.
Oh, I'm, oh, I forgot that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
You're welcome.
Okay, now let's go on to Planning Commission. I would like to bring forth the name of Tom Faria. He's not here, so we'll just, you know, bring his name up anyway. And so do I have a second for Mr. Faria? Mrs. Santos?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Mrs. Santos, to appoint Mr. Faria to the Planning Commission, to help serve to pick members. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. And now let's go on to Tree Commission. And I'd like to bring forth the name of Brent Jones for the Tree Commission, two vacancies. Do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Mrs. Johnson-Santos, to bring forth Brent Jones' name to help me with the selection. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. And let's go on to Veronica Johnson-Santos, I would like to bring forth for the Measure H Committee. And, oh, I forgot, all you guys agree to these things? You okay? Yes, I did. Little late, but that's okay. All right, so I'd like to bring forth Veronica Johnson-Santos' name for the Measure H Committee. Do I have a second for that? Mr. Jones?
Second.
Okay, motion by the mayor, second by Mr. Jones, to appoint Veronica Johnson-Santos to the Measure H Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Thank you very much. Okay, item 11, discussion regarding commissions and boards by district representation. And we're going to go to Director Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a PowerPoint presentation, if you could put that up.
All right.
Thank you.
Let's go here. Let's see, one, two.
All right.
Can we do it?
Yep, we're on.
Oh, but you're not on my screen. Oh, now you are. Okay. All right.
All right. So just a little bit of background on this particular item for commissions and boards, and this is, this, staff is seeking city council comment and direction regarding district representation for commissions and boards. Excuse me. So just a bit of history in the city of Los Manos. In November of 2014, excuse me, the citizens voted to adopt a by-district method of elections for city council members. This created four electoral districts and the mayor at large. One member of the city council is elected from each district, and they have to reside in that district. Our first by-district election was held in 2016. That was for District 1, which is Councilmember Johnson-Santos, and District 4, which is Councilmember Lewis's district. And then the last election, which was held in 2018, was for Districts 2 and Districts 3. District 2 is Mr. Faria, Councilmember Faria, and District 3 is Councilmember Jones. This is a map of the districts, all four districts, just for reference. So the appointments are set by a resolution, and this resolution was attached to the staff report. This resolution sets that the appointments are done by approval of the mayor and then confirmation by the city council. Currently, there's five commissions and boards. There's Parks and Recreation Commission, which has five members, the Planning Commission, which has seven members, the Tree Commission, which has five members, EDAC, the Economic Development Advisory Commission, which has seven, and then the Airport Advisory Commission, which has five members. Currently, all of those commissions are selected at large and not by districts. So tonight, staff is asking that the city council would consider whether to implement district representation for appointments. There's essentially four options within the staff report, and I'm just going to go over those. The first option would be to have at least one commission member from each district, and then no more than two commission members from any single district represented. So it'd be very simple. You have to have, in any given commission, you have to have at least one member represent a district, but then no more than two members in a district. It's just very simple. The second option would be to appoint one commission member from each of the four districts with the rainy, remaining commission members just appointed at large. For instance, using the Planning Commission as an example, there's, that's a seven-member commission, you would have four members specific to each district, and then three at large. And they would just, they could be from any district, doesn't matter, they would just be at large, period. So it's a little district, a little different than option number one, which option number one is strict, that you can't have more than two representatives from each district. The third option, and is actually a recommendation from staff, would be that the district representation would be for only the Planning Commission, and to leave the other commissions as they are, and would be using option one or option two, but only applying those to the Planning Commission, as the Planning Commission really serves a geographical purpose. So they are focusing on land use approvals and development. They are often the final approval for permits and specific land use entitlements, and they're also a recommending body. But that particular commission is very geographically based. So staff is recommending that, if, nothing else, that the city council would consider district representation for at least the Planning Commission, and maybe just at this time, just the Planning Commission as it is geographically based. The Planning Commission currently consists of seven members, like I said, who are appointed to two-year terms by the mayor and then confirmed by the city council. And currently, we only have two districts represented, and that's Districts 2 and Districts 4. Not all four districts are represented on the Planning Commission. So staff sees that there's a need to at least have some district representation on that particular commission, if all else. And then the last and final option would then be to make no changes. If the city council sees fit that no changes are needed and would like to keep it as it is, then there would be no change to the ordinance. There are benefits, and there's, so pros and cons, benefits and negatives, to creating district representation, which I just wanted to mention. So the benefits to creating district representation is that it promotes geographic representation. It addresses the needs of underserved neighborhoods, and it represents viewpoints of diverse community residents. It really brings in different thoughts and perspectives from different folks from all over the city. The negative would be that if we were to create districts, we could possibly be limiting the pool of eligible applicants, as we would only allow members to be representatives of particular districts. So we could be limiting eligible applicants. So with this, concluding this particular presentation, if directed, staff would bring the item back in probably February, and the city council would then continue following the current policy in the meantime. So the previous item was appointments to commissions and boards, and those interviews will happen as there's commissions that are expiring on December 31 of this year, and to continue business as usual, there will still be interviews, and the policy of appointments will still carry on as Resolution 5008 outlines. But in the interim, staff is encouraging the city council to consider striving to appoint commission members that are representatives of each district in that meantime until, or if, the council decides that they would like to change the ordinance. So with that, is there any questions on those particular options? I know I kind of went through them pretty quickly. If you'd like me to go back, feel free, but any questions at this time?
Well, okay, so let's let me go through this slowly. So for now, we would, commission members would apply at large. Okay? And so we would not be waiting till February to select any commission members. We would just go ahead right away and, and select the commission members like we normally did, and then if this changes, it'll probably affect the next round then, correct?
Most likely, unless the city council, as a part of the direction to staff, wanted to change the ordinance and make that effective immediately. It just depends, but reasonably, I think staff sees that this would happen with the vacancies that had happened at the end of the year.
Okay.
That we would set and create that policy, that ordinance now.
Okay.
To be implemented when those terms expire at the end of the year.
Okay, so staff, you, you have your decision, I mean, council, you have, you can weigh in on whether you want to do this immediately, or you want to wait till positions expire, and then we can appoint under the new system. So let me hear some comments. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you. My question was, which we briefly discussed.
The mic is off.
Oh, is it on?
Thank you.
There you go.
We briefed, my question was, which we briefly...
We briefed, my question was, which we briefly discussed, was that what would happen, see if, is this discretion of the council to do the districting? What would happen, I guess, if we were to have nobody, for instance, in my district, which is not represented, if we had no one come up for that? What is, what are the options there?
I would think, I would imagine that then we would re-advertise so that we could have a representative from that district. I would imagine that's how we would set the policy. So if we did not get any applicants, we would just re-advertise to make sure that we had folks apply from that particular district.
And do you see that being like an issue? Because I, I know we briefly spoke, you said that there's, there tends to be a fairly good-sized pool on applicants, but do you see that as being an issue for the city needing to re-advertise and whatnot?
Particularly for the Planning Commission, I really don't see that as an issue, as we do get a fairly good pool of candidates for that particular commission. I would say, though, for other commissions, and even being, EDAC in particular is, is a commission that I oversee, that it would be difficult. If we were to have district representatives on other commissions, we probably would have a difficult time filling those positions, but with the Planning Commission, I think we get a diverse enough group of applicants and a large pool of applicants that I don't think would be an issue.
Thank you.
Sorry, go ahead.
Well, thank you. So I would just like to say that I personally like the fact that we could evenly represent all districts. So I, for me, and of course, we're waiting on what the rest of the council thinks, but I would like to see that the Planning Commission be set up as a, as a district commission. And I guess, within the options, I guess what I would like to see, option two, or at least there's one representative, both in the resting and be throughout, but of course, it's at the discretion of the rest of the council to see what they think. Thank you.
Can I throw this out before I forget? Okay. Say we advertise in a district and we don't receive any applicants, and we do the advertisements and we do our due diligence, the council member goes out, tries to get an applicant. Instead of advertising in that area, again, can we add, I would say, it might be nice to advertise at-large. And then if someone from that district advertises or comes forward, that's something else. But once we advertise in that particular district and we don't get any applicants, I mean, just doing the same thing over again may not generate anything, and we may have to wait. So maybe open it up at-large if no one applies the second time.
But I, well, if I'm, I think at one point, when we spoke about it, she was saying, stating that if we did not get anybody within the district, we would perhaps have the council member go out and try to, oh, sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry.
It's okay, go ahead.
But I think even at, which, I guess what you're saying with the large pool of people, we are eventually going to find, there's a chance that we'll probably find somebody within that district.
Yeah. I, I'm just hoping, because I don't wanna operate commissions with less than a full complement and keep waiting for, for someone to, to come forward if they don't. So I'm just looking for all the options that we can in order to get it done. Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. I, I also agree that I would like to see you start off with the Planning Commission. I'm not sure. The urgency with the other commissions at this point, maybe at a later date, as we evaluate how this works with the Planning Commission, we may wanna bring on the other commissions. But I, I kinda think that once we start having our district meetings with our constituents and having staff work with us, that we'll be able to find a, a pretty good pool of people out there. And as council members, it's up to us to really go and work our district and find people who we think would be good candidates to represent the district that, that we're elected to represent, and encourage them. Because one of the things that I, I wanna see within our city is that we start bringing some new, fresh ideas, that I'm really grateful for people who serve long-term on planning commissions. I was fortunate enough to serve two four-year terms and one two-year term. So that meant a lot to me to gain the knowledge that I had. But I, I think some people sometimes feel intimidated that, oh, I'm not gonna apply because, you know, person X or person Z is on there and I don't have a chance. So as our city is growing, you know, we've, we've got people that are moving here that have good ideas, and we need to go out there and find these people to help us on our planning commission. So I, I would like to see us move forward with districting on the Planning Commission. The at-large portion, which I think was dot number two on there, is a good idea. I, I do wanna see us make the effort as much as possible to get people from within the district to be a member of the Planning Commission. And I, I just, I just wanna make sure that we're equaling out things and making sure that we have that diversity. Because as you said, Stacy, and what people expect in one district may not be something that is expected in another, and bringing these ideas together to make a cohesive city and new and fresh ideas is, is, it could be a challenge, but I think it, it can work out. So I would, I would be in favor of staff looking at bringing the Planning Commission on board and making sure that we have at least one person from each district that's appointed, and the others could be at-large. But I, I'm hoping that we're gonna make a concerted effort as we advertise for these seats coming forward that are gonna be vacant, to, to impress upon the, upon the application and to make the announcements that we are in districts, and these are the districts, and make sure that people understand that clearly, that they have that opportunity to apply if they live in, in a particular district where there's this vacancy available. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
I would recommend not to change the ordinance. The districts, the way that they're kinda laid out, I always liked the idea of cherry-picking the best of the best applicants. I don't wanna be limited just because we don't have somebody in a certain district. I know when I was running for city council, I represented everybody from custom homeowners to people living in apartments. And so my district was very broad, and it pretty much covered a little bit of everybody in town. So I don't see how, you know, finding someone in District Three just to fill a spot wouldn't actually make a big difference versus if everybody lived in District One or District Two or District Four, they're all pretty well mixed together. So I'd like to see us get the best of the best in town, just because it was just so small as it is.
Thank you. Well, what, and, and again, my concern is that, is that we should go out and beat the bushes the first time and, and try to find applicants. Because if we have to re-advertise, that's when I kinda wanna go at-large if, if we don't get someone, and not go out the second time and beat the bushes. We need to do this first because staff needs to find out who they're gonna be working with on all the commissions, and I just don't wanna wait for another round. So my suggestion would be that if we don't get someone from a district after we go out and personally solicit, that we go to, to at-large for the second round of, of, of advertising. Because that's gonna almost guarantee if no one does apply from that, that district. Mrs. Lewis? Oh, not on purpose. Something tonight, we gotta check these out.
When we advertise in previous years for commissions, how often do we go out and advertisement for the beginning of that term?
Usually just once, and the assistant city clerk can, can probably confirm that.
We advertise, we advertise once in November before the December appointments are up.
Okay, so we've advertised already for whatever vacancies we have for various commissions?
Yes, we did, and the deadline to apply was November 30th.
Okay.
We do have applicants, we don't have applicants for, to fill all the vacancies, and then you will have your selection committee interviews, and we'll see what happens from there.
Why is this thing?
So then, that, that kinda takes care of the, the idea of going out for a second advertisement. And, and that would also show just how important it is to anyone who's applying for a commission, their sincerity is, you know, making that first advertisement and getting their application in on time.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and again, I said, I just don't wanna waste staff's time if we go out and do only an advertisement for a, a district the second time, that, you know, we're really limiting ourselves. And so it's kinda, you wanna, kinda want the best of both worlds. So we've already advertised, and, and we kinda need to follow that process. And then as commission vacancies expire, then, then I think it's the recommend, or the, what, what we'd like to bring forward from direction of the council is we are in agreement that, unless, with Mr. Jones's comment, that I, I think the direction should be that we bring back some sort of ordinance to talk about districting. Mrs. Santos?
Yeah.
Okay. And, and in, in order to, to kinda take into consideration what, what Mr. Jones has said, if no one applies for that position in a district, that we then go out at-large to try and find someone and not just spin our wheels. So, so it's up to the council members to beat the bushes. And how does it work, again, with the mayor? So do I just appoint from any place?
So, yeah, so that second bullet point would be really then the at-large.
Correct.
So at-large, that doesn't have to be in any particular district, they would represent the city as a whole.
But that would...
Wait a minute, Mrs., go ahead.
That would still be, oh, I'm on. That would still be through the interview process.
Of course.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no automatic go, go-to-go, okay?
Now, with the districting, how, how does staff foresee that working? Is that through an interviewing process, or is that just by virtue of appointment?
No, it would definitely still be an interview process, as we could possibly have multiple applications in any particular district. So definitely, I'm, I'm sure we would wanna still keep that interview process to ensure that we still have folks that are, are able to serve in that capacity.
No one gets an automatic pass, okay? All right. Mr., oh, go ahead.
I think that's what a lot of cities are doing today, is especially with their planning commission, be it county, you know, I, I have a relative in the San Diego area that's appointed to the county planning commission, and most cities do the same thing, is that their district, that if you're, if you're in a district, then that's, you, you try your best to get someone from your district to represent the planning commission through appointment process. If you're, you know, an at-large council, as we used to be, then that process worked where everybody in the city who wanted to apply could apply, and the commissions were chosen as such. But now that we're in districts, I think it's only appropriate to follow suit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
What would be the process if somebody ended up moving out of their district and into another if they were on the planning commission?
So if they were a district representative, then I would assume that we would need to re-advertise, it would be essentially, they would need to notify, we'd set that out in an ordinance of what would happen in that case. But just like it would for the city council, I would imagine you wouldn't be able to serve in your capacity as a city council member, so, and in this case with the Planning Commission, you wouldn't be able to serve in that capacity, and you, there would essentially be a vacancy, and we'd need to re-advertise and fill that vacancy.
Well, they'd finish out their term, though, wouldn't they?
I, we would probably set that out in the ordinance, but if they were appointed based on where they live geographically, I would imagine that, that's how I would envision it, unless the city council sees it differently. But, I mean, we're still in the pre-conceptual stage of, of what that ordinance, what that policy would look like.
Almost the same as if they moved out of town.
Essentially.
Okay. Yes. Well, if, if, if you could, I, you know, I'd like to make a recommendation that they finish out their term, because I don't want midstream, then all of a sudden we have to advertise for someone. It would be that they, they'd finish it, and then we'd, we'd put someone in their district if they were no longer eligible, because that's what we did with city council. I mean, we just didn't kick someone off because we went to districting. Mrs. Lewis?
With the planning commission, with the planning commission, we have a seven-body member, right?
Yes, we do.
And you need at least five people to have a quorum, is that correct?
Four.
Four.
Four, to have a quorum? Okay. So if someone moves out of town or no longer lives in the district, you know, there has to be some sense of eligibility, it would seem to me, in order to stay in that position. I, I don't know, I, I guess I, I just feel a little awkward that if someone, I, I would, I guess I would see it as the honorable thing to do, if someone moved out of the district or out of, out of Los Banos, that they would resign their position. If I were a council member and moved to another district, I certainly wouldn't see myself as being eligible to represent a district that I didn't live in anymore.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know, it's just kinda my take on it.
Well, you could, we could decide on that.
I mean, we could look at other cities and see how they handle that, what the best practices are in a situation like that.
And we can, we can research, you know, various policies and, and see how other cities deal with that situation, as district representation on commissions and boards is, is now becoming the norm.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I clicked my light, but it, it just, no, you're fine, I just was gonna state that I...
These are, these are working differently tonight.
No worries.
So...
I was just gonna say that I, I do, I mean, after, I mean, I know that we're doing research now, so I was gonna retract that, but I do like, I personally like what the mayor said about allowing them to finish out their term, and then definitely moving on to the next after that, but...
Yeah. And then the only other thing I, I would ask is that we, we advertise within the district first, and then if we can't find someone, then, and we beat the bushes with a, with a, a council member, then the next time we advertise at-large to, to get someone to come in. So you have your direction?
Yes, I do, thank you.
All right, thank you. In other words, council members? All right. Let's go on to advisement of, okay, yeah, advisement of public notices, and item 12, we have no report tonight, is that correct? All right, let's go on to city manager's report. Dr. Aziz?
Thank you, Mayor, just congratulations to Rochelle for, for receiving the employee of the year award. Congratulations to the other nominees as well, shining examples of the hard work day to day, day in, day out of city employees. And those are, don't wanna discount the hard work of all the other employees. We've got a lot of other employees doing good work, doing good things, highly committed staff we have here, so thanks to all of our city employees. There's a couple of other things, but I'm sure council members will, will, will cover those. Happy holidays to everyone, safe travels, happy new year as well.
We'll say them just in case.
No, I know you'll cover it, Mayor. No, I, I have not.
All right, I'm gonna bring you back in if they don't.
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay, I just don't wanna miss anything.
No, I don't think we will.
All right. Let's go on to city council member reports, and tonight we'll start with Mrs. Santos.
Thank you. So I want to first say thank you to Sarah and Jennifer for our holiday spread out there, it was wonderful, we do appreciate it. Another mention of the Merced County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services Holiday Event on December 22nd at 3:00, it's supposed to be food, fun, Santa, and community resources. So, and then lastly, Merry Christmas to everyone, I hope everyone has a wonderful new year and be safe, and drive safe, and don't contend with traffic, but thank you.
Where's the event located?
It's at the Community Center, yes, thank you.
All right, let's go on to, next one is Mr. Jones.
I just wanna thank the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce for putting on an excellent Christmas parade, they did a wonderful job, there was a great turnout, as well as I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year if we don't see each other before then. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to congratulate the fire department and also the police department, I understand, was in on this, and in cooperation with Rochelle and all the hard work that she did. I saw this on the news, I think it was on ABC News a couple of days ago, where the fire department raised quite a bit of money for a young lady named Emily who has leukemia here in Los Banos, and also to help raise money for transportation for her family. here in Los Banos, and also to help raise money for transportation for her family to take her back and forth to her treatment. So thank you to our fire department, to reaching out to this young girl for taking her on a Christmas shopping spree and providing funds for her family to take her to treatment. It was a wonderful Christmas idea and a gift to them, and that's what Los Banos community is all about. I want to also just let the community know that we had a successful concert with San Jose State University Choir, who appeared here last Sunday in Los Banos. We had several hundred people who came to this community, I mean, to this event. It was free to the community, and I hope in two years that we will be able to bring them back again and have the community enjoy another Christmas concert. So for those who missed it, hopefully you'll be able to come in two years. And with that, I would like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a safe new year, and we look forward to seeing you back here in 2019. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, yes, every Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, safe Christmas, safe New Years to everyone. Rochelle Chuffo, congratulations for being employee of the year, and all the other city employees that were nominated for this prestigious event, and everybody's a winner. This, this town is absolutely fantastic, the employees are fantastic. As, as I said, out in, in Nefoye, it, they make us look good. Everybody does their job, and they do it well. So thank you to all the employees, department heads, everyone. Alex, we're, I think we're very fortunate to have the staff that we have. So thank you, thank you. Christmas parade, as Brett mentioned, that, that thing just keeps growing and growing and growing and growing. We had 67 entries this year, a record number of entries. It's, it's a phenomenal parade. Sometimes in some of the areas, they were five or six deep in the, in the streets watching the parade. Very, very orderly event. Thanks to everyone who helped put this on. Chamber of Commerce do a great job every year. Thank you to city staff, everything to make this come together and be a very safe event. So again, thank you, thank you so much. The Sarah and Jennifer, what can I say? Excellent food, excellent job, well-presented, thank you very much for what you did. I am very thankful for, for everything that we have in this city. Thank you for passing Measure H. Citizens of Los Banos, it's going to be a real boost for us. Thank, thank you so much. I feel that this council is a unified bunch, we're going to have a, we're going to have a great time approving the expenditures of Measure H money, and, and also furthering this town with, with the savings that, that is, is already in, in our reserves plus our general fund, and, and thanks to the great work of the employees in, in helping us to, to make sure that we have a solvent city. Can't thank you enough. We have a lot of things to be thankful for, and, and this city's done a great job. So thank you so much, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year again. And with that, are there any other comments? If not, I will adjourn the last meeting for the year at 8:01.